Evening. Okay, we're gonna conduct our legislative caucus prior to the start of our legislative session. So following our caucus, I will call the meeting to order. Mr. Truesdale will lead our roll call. The invocation will now be led by Councilwoman Davis. Councilwoman Rawls is excused this evening. And the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Vice President Green. We do not have any communications this evening. We will then move to courtesy of the floor, followed by the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on June 10th, 2025. Then we will move to reports of committees. I will deliver all of the reports. So we will start with the Administration Committee report on the work session of June 17th, 2025. Then we will have the Community and Economic Development Committee report on the work session of June 17th, 2025. Next, the Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee report on the work session of June 17th, 2025. And then the final committee report will be that of the Public Works Committee on the work session of June 17th, 2025. We do not have any ordinances for first reading, ordinances for amendment, or ordinances for final passage. We will then move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration is Resolution 56 of 2024, which we will vote upon. Next, Resolution 32 of 2025, which we will vote upon. Resolution 37 of 2025, which we will vote upon. Resolution 42 of 2025, which we will vote upon. Resolution 43 of 2025, which we will vote upon. And Resolution 44 of 2025, which we will vote upon. Resolution 46 of 2025 will move to the Administration Committee. And Resolution 47 of 2025 will move to the Building and Housing Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Seeing and hearing none, any new business? Okay, seeing and hearing none, then we will adjourn. So let's get started. The time is 6:06 PM. I would like to call our legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones? Ms. Rawls? Mr. Rodriguez? Ms. Hill?
Present. Please note for the meeting record that both Councilwoman Rawls and Councilman Rodriguez are excused this evening. And Councilman Jones, but if he arrives, we'll note his presence. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, President Hill. Good evening, everyone. Let's keep the family and friends of Mary E. Hudson, who has passed on. Let's keep them in our prayers going forward. This must be a difficult time for them. But I want to highlight that Ms. Mary E. Hudson was educated in the Harrisburg School District and retired from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. She was also a lifelong member of Camp Curtin Memorial Mitchell United Methodist Church. And she loved her church, faithfully served in numerous capacities, to include president of the United Methodist Women's Communion. And I could go on and on. But I will just ask us to keep her family in our prayers. Also, in light of the end of the school year, I'd like to also have a moment of silence and prayer for our young scholars who are out of school. Let's keep them in mind for a safe and productive summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Vice President Green.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice President Green. As I mentioned, we do not have any communications this evening, so we will move to courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper, and I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer a public comment?
Hi, my name is Brian Mohammed. Living on 2200 blocks of New Street. I just wanna thank the Department of Works. They came and fixed the light. They paved the alley, patted the path and all that. They did what they said we were gonna do. So I wanna give them applause for the work that they did. Okay, time, I see the time. Okay, ma'am. Handicap parking. Handicap parking, you gotta go down and register each year. But anybody can park at your parking space. The handicap folks on my block, they gotta put the walkers out there 'cause folks take their spots. Put the trash cans, all that out there. It's just a mess. And at one time, they said they could only stay there. They couldn't stay there overnight. Now they can stay there as long as they want. 'Cause I talked to the parking people. Now, it's still on their side, they put the tag numbers who spoke to park there. That's still, they say they used to do that here, but I don't know. Okay, that's that. South 20th, I mean North 20th Street. There's a bunch of abandoned cars back there on bricks. My old neighborhood, my father still lives there, he's 91. There's a road problem back there. It's just a, it's a mess back there, by the line. And there's cars back there that have wrong tags and all that over there, too. So there's some work to do over there. And the garages over there, they tore up. And the children be back there playing. And the one, I think the one resident told them, "Oh, y'all both don't be on there in case y'all fall in the hole. Somebody gotta go get help." So the roofs of the garage is all messed up, there's abandoned cars and all that. Parking. Midtown. I think Midtown need to be free after 5:00, too. It's free downtown, but Midtown, I think Midtown got more going on than downtown. But it's not free after 5:00, but Midtown. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer a public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left?
Good evening, council. My name is Robert Williams, Senior. I'm a resident of 1630 North Fifth Street, Harrisburg, PA. On January 29th of this year, I filed a sworn citizen complaint with the Harrisburg Bureau of Police under City Code 3301. The ordinance is not optional. Within 24 hours, I was entitled to a receipt of Internal Affairs case number. At 30, 60, and 90 days, I was entitled to status letters in each quarter. This body is entitled to internal affairs statistics. None of those requirements have been met. No receipt, no case number, no 30, 60, or 90-day updates, and critically, no quarterly IA reports have ever received. This council deprived you of oversight power. When I met with the Mayor, Juana Williams, and Commissioner Carter on June 17th, they told me to my face that they could not talk to me about my complaint due to a civil lawsuit that was filed. That is retaliation and not policy. Because the city code has been ignored for over 144 days and counting, on Friday, I filed a private criminal complaint under PA Rules of Criminal Procedure 506, alleging official oppression, obstruction of administration of law, tampering with public records, and other related offenses. Tonight, I respectfully request that council direct the public, direct the police bureau immediately to deliver the overdue Quarter 1 and Quarter 2 Internal Affairs statistics, including every open complaint number. Schedule an oversight hearing to examine why Ordinance 3301 has been systematically ignored. Refer this matter to Dolphin County District Attorney, and if necessary, the Pennsylvania Attorney General for independent investigation. Our ordinance is clear, the deadline has passed. Your authority under 3301.5 is being thwarted. I ask you to assert the authority this evening. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you. We will move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for the legislative session that occurred on June 10th, 2025. Council members, are there any revisions to those minutes?
Yes, President Hill. I think for consistency purposes, President Hill is mentioned in the notes, but also President Bowers. So there's two names.
Thank you for-
Thank you.
Is there a second regarding the motion to correct the minutes?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'm the same person, I just got married. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Ms. Rawls? Mr. Rodriguez? Ms. Hill?
Yes.
The amendment passes 4 to 0.
Thank you. We will now move to the reports of committees. Please bear with me as I'm delivering some other committee reports this evening. So we will begin with the Administration Committee report on the work session of June 17th, 2025. On Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, the Administration Committee met to discuss three resolutions. Resolution 34 of 2025, a resolution appointing Ms. Yvonne Marie Jackson to serve as a member of the Board of the Harrisburg Housing Authority. Resolution 35 of 2025, a resolution appointing Ms. Laura Robinson to serve as a member of the Board of the Harrisburg Housing Authority. And Resolution 44 of 2025, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an access control agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Department of General Services, for that portion of Geiger Street situated between Front and Second Streets in the City of Harrisburg. So Resolution 34 of 2025 and Resolution 35 of 2025 were discussed at the same time. Both Ms. Yvonne Marie Jackson and Ms. Laura Robinson were present to answer any questions that council members had. Ms. Jackson introduced herself and shared why she was interested in serving as a member of the Board of the Harrisburg Housing Authority. She is a resident of Jackson Towers. She has an interest in helping seniors in her building. Ms. Robinson introduced herself and shared why she was interested in serving as a member of the Board of the Harrisburg Housing Authority. Ms. Robinson is a lifelong Harrisburg resident who used to live in McClay Street Apartments. Council members asked the following questions. What would you like to see done with the Harrisburg Housing Authority? How did you hear about the Board? And why did you want to join? Please share one objective you'd like to accomplish? And are there any conflicts of interest? Ms. Jackson wants to listen to our seniors and has a desire to help our people. Ms. Jackson heard about the vacancy in her building. Ms. Robinson wants to help all of the low-income housing residents. And she heard about the vacancy from a former board member. Both women stated that they have no known conflicts of interest. I encourage my colleagues, well, we're noting that they are tabled for this evening's agenda. So, we discussed them last week. Next, we have Resolution 44 of 2025. Mr. Neil Grover, city solicitor, provided an overview of the resolution stating that it is a formal document with the Commonwealth, mainly for security and maintenance of the governor's residence. It is, he noted that the portion that this resolution covers is an unused alleyway on Geiger Street between Front and Second Streets. Mr. Sam Skolkowski, interim business administrator, shared that the mayor is 100% supportive of this process that the state is able to secure the governor's mansion. I encourage my colleagues to support Resolution 44 of 2025. Any action the City of Harrisburg can take to ensure the safety of our governor and his family should be an easy yes. So this concludes the report of the Administration Committee on the work session of June 17th, 2025. Next, I will deliver the Community and Economic Development Committee report on the work session of June 17th, 2025. On Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, the Community and Economic Development Committee met to discuss two resolutions. Resolution 56 of 2024 is a resolution approving the preliminary and final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Midtown Redevelopment LLC to consolidate and subdivide various vacant parcels into multiple project sites to develop single-family and multifamily dwellings, commercial space, and accessory parking, along with associated improvements in the area bounded by Riley Street, Fulton Street, Saferd Street, and James Street. Mr. Jeffrey Knight, Planning Director for the City of Harrisburg, was present to discuss Resolution 56. Mr. Knight shared that the project is similar to the Capital Town Homes development, and the development spans seven sites. It includes row homes. Three will be developed as multifamily dwellings. Those are Buildings 1, 2, and 3. One of the sites will be a mixed-use building, that's Building 5. One of the sites will be a food hall, Building 4. And three will be developed as accessory parking for the proposed residential and commercial buildings. In total, there will be 62 units across 23 individual buildings and approximately 5,500 square feet of commercial space. Mr. Chris Bryce and Mr. Christian Cobal were present to discuss Resolution 56 of 2024. Mr. Bryce explained that they worked closely with the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority to have the lots converted. The anticipated groundbreaking will be held in November of 2025. Council members asked the following questions. Were there any timeline impacts due to the delay? Were residents that currently live in the neighborhood aware of the updates with the project? Market value for apartments and townhouses? And are any of the townhomes for sale? Mr. Bryce confirmed that there is a 10% carve-out for affordable housing. Five or six of the townhomes will be for sale. Next, Resolution 32 of 2025 is a resolution approving the preliminary and final land development plan for 555 South 25th Street, submitted by Commonwealth Charter Academy to demolish a portion of the existing school building on-site and redevelop the property as a cyber charter school with a larger building footprint and expanded site and access improvements. Ms. Tiersa Cameron, Assistant City Solicitor, shared a technical amendment prior to the discussion of the resolution. Mr. Jim Skinner, Facilities Director for Commonwealth Charter Academy, was present and explained that the space will be similar to the Commonwealth Charter Academy's virtual learning areas. The space is primarily for staff members. Mr. Patel, the developer for the project, shared that he knocked on 75% of the neighbors' doors in an effort to ensure that they were aware of the project. The applicant requested that the traffic impact study be removed. And I would like to note for the record that there is an additional exhibit. Is that correct, Ms. Cameron?
No, no additional exhibit. And the traffic study was not removed because it's what technically happened in the meeting. It is further clarified in the resolution, though, that their project is approved by the planning commission without any conditions, so.
Thank you for clarifying. Council members asked the following questions. Do you foresee any issues with two schools in the area? Mr. Skinner replied, "No, there will be no buses, staff only." I encourage my colleagues to support both Resolution 56 of 2024 and Resolution 32 of 2025. Resolution 56 of 2024 provides additional housing opportunities for city residents. Resolution 32 of 2025 will provide assistance to the staff of Commonwealth Charter Academy. This concludes the Community and Economic Development Committee report on the work session of June 17th, 2025. Next, we have the work session report from the Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee on the work session of June 17th, 2025. On Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, the Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee met to discuss one resolution. Resolution 43 of 2025, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a lease agreement with the Harrisburg School District for that portion of land that houses the Jackson Lake Pool in order to allow continued operations as the parties work toward finalizing the city's subdivision and acquisition thereof. Mr. Neil Grover, city solicitor, shared that this is basically a legal agreement between the two entities. Council members did not have any questions. I recommend support of Resolution 43 of 2025 to ensure that our children and members of the public have access to the Jackson Lake Pool. This concludes the report of the Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee on the work session of June 17th, 2025. The final report I will deliver this evening is on behalf of the Public Works Committee on the work session of June 17th, 2025. On June 17th, 2025, the Public Works Committee met to discuss Resolution 42 of 2025, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Arbor Pro, Inc., for the purpose of performing a tree inventory and related urban forestry services. Our city forester, Cody, I apologize, I don't know his last name and I'm having technical difficulties in accessing it, was present to discuss the resolution. There was also representation from Arbor Pro Incorporated. The, this agreement will be funded through a grant. Council members didn't have any questions on this either. We felt that it was pretty self-explanatory. So I recommend support of Resolution 42 of 2025. This concludes the report of the Public Works Committee on the work session of June 17th, 2025. We do not have any ordinances for first reading, ordinances for amendment, or ordinances for final passage. So we will move forward with resolutions. The first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution 56 of 2024. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 56, 2024. A resolution approving the preliminary/final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Midtown Redevelopment LLC to consolidate and subdivide various vacant parcels into multiple project sites to develop single-family and multifamily dwellings, commercial space, and accessory parking, along with associated improvements in the area bound by Riley Street, Fulton Street, Saferd Street, and James Street.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 56 of 2024? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution 56, 2024, passes by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 32 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 32, 2025. A resolution approving the preliminary/final land development plan for 555 South 25th Street, submitted by Commonwealth Charter Academy to demolish a portion of the existing school building on-site and redevelop the property as a cyber charter school with a larger building footprint and expanded site and access improvements.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 32 of 2025? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yeah.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution 32, 2025, passes by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 37 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 37, 2025. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a co-sponsorship agreement with TLC Work-Based Training Program Incorporated for the implementation of a workforce development program in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 37 of 2025? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution 37, 2025, passes by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 42 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 42, 2025. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Arbiter Pro Incorporated for the purpose of performing a tree inventory and related urban forestry services.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 42 of 2025? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution 42, 2025, passes by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 43 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 43, 2025. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a lease agreement with the Harrisburg School District for that portion of land that houses the Jackson Lake Pool in order to allow continued operations as the parties work towards finalizing the city's subdivision and acquisition thereof.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 43 of 2025?
Madam President, just for the record, after the meeting last week, well, yesterday, the- after the meeting last week, well, yesterday, the city received proposed, uh, technical corrections, amendments to the, uh, um, lease agreement and an exhibit that better described the physical area. All of those changes were acceptable to the city, and we provided that substitute exhibit for the resolution to the clerk's office, uh, to put with the resolution. Um, the, uh, because of the switch-over at the school district after the council votes, although it came from their council, they still have to vote at the board level as well, just like the council does on the agreement.
Okay.
Just, just to, just to keep you up to date.
No, thank you, and everyone, well, yeah, okay, thank you. Um, the updated agreement should replace Exhibit A in Resolution forty-three of two thousand and twenty-five, just for everyone's reference. Thank you, Solicitor Grover. Any other questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution forty-three of two thousand and twenty-five? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yeah.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution forty-three, twenty twenty-five, passes by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Resolution forty-four of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty-four, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an access control agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Department of General Services for that portion of Geiger Street situated between Front and Second Streets in the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution forty-four of two thousand and twenty-five? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution forty-four, twenty twenty-five, passes by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Resolution forty-six of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty-six, twenty twenty-five, a resolution appointing Mr. Basir Vincent to serve on the Harrisburg Planning Commission.
Thank you. Resolution forty-six of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Administration Committee. Our final, uh, resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution forty-seven of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty-seven, twenty twenty-five, a resolution approving the twenty twenty-five annual action plan for the City of Harrisburg for the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships, and Emergency Solutions Grant Programs.
Thank you. Resolution forty-seven of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Building and Housing Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Okay. Uh, seeing and hearing none, any new business?
Yeah, I just want to, um, offer my apologies for my turniness to my colleagues in the, the community as well, that's it.
Well, thank you. Apology accepted, but you made it safely, that's important. Okay, if there is no further business, uh, the time is six thirty-seven PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you, we stand adjourned.